Our invocation is going to be led by Rocky James Cregler.
Cregler.
At once. Uh, something about him, he's been married for 34 years. He has five children. He's lived in Van Alstine for 17 years. And they started the Glory Rider Cowboy Church in October of 2013. This church is located on 3632 County Road 417. And I'm sure we'll invite all of you and we want to thank you and welcome. And he's going to lead us in our invocation tonight. So Rocky. Stand.
Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we come to your throne and we thank you, Father, for your son in person. There would be no hope without him. Father, I ask that you guide this meeting with your Holy Spirit, every living being. Fathers, from the foundation of the world, we beg everyone of these leaders to be bidden for a reason, Father, with courage, with leadership, most of all, fathers, and always right in heaven. Father, I ask that you protect the servicemen of this country and their family. I ask that you protect these precious leaders that live in the city of Van Alstine. I ask that you protect the police department and the fire department, each is safe, Father. And the two in their throats, Father. Guide them, show them peace and joy, give them the courage they need. Father, let them know that you're there, open them in your mighty right hand and say, "Go forward and do the work. Each one of you better." Father, we will give you the praise of the Lord forever, and Jesus Christ.
If you will remain standing, Karen Tarver will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you will, please turn to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. You may be seen. The first item on our agenda is citizens' communication. Jennifer, do we have any? Anyone that is wishing to speak at the council meeting, there is a form that you fill out when you first come in the door. If you were not aware of that and have not filled out before, please do so now. If there is a certain subject that you want to discuss, you put that number on there and when that subject comes up, I will call on you. The first time we have, first thing that we have is Karen Tarver. She wishes to address the issue of new water meters. Karen?
It's been brought to my attention that the Public Works Department is putting in new water meters. And with that, they're not giving any notice to the residents, nor are they explaining to the residents how to open the meters or how to use the meters. And so I just wanted to bring to the attention of the council and to the Public Works that I think it's only kind and the proper thing to do is to inform our citizens of the changes and actions that are taking place in the city.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Elizabeth. Have I got it for five?
True.
True. Well, two for two, so.
I live on Best Marshall, and I wanted to talk to you about the watering. I just put in a new lawn in the backyard, and I would like to water more than twice a week. And I've built out a variance farm, but I don't know, I mean, what, can I?
This is something that you will have to check and see. You did turn in your variance form.
Yes.
How long ago?
Oh, end of last week.
The end of last week.
And I meet to, my watering days are Saturday and Wednesday, but before then, I was watering an hour in the morning and an hour at night to try and, you know, keep the sound.
I want to suggest you go to City Hall tomorrow and meet with their city manager, Mr. Baker, and he will give you the results of the variance with this.
Absolutely. If it goes to the Public Works Director, he'll be evaluating it. He'll be the one to get with you. I see very much the plan.
Do you have the, how long does the process take?
The principal of that will be the Public Works Director. He's been retired up. He'll get a bit of the issues he's been running into over the last 23 years.
It's wrong yard.
Yeah, my yard is 20 by 7.
Public Works Director will be giving you.
Before long, I'm going to die. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you received the?
Yes, she has spoken to me, had enough letters.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you.
Next, we have Rebecca Rodriguez. Hello. This is attorney's power.
I'd like to address the city concerning the power plant that's going up on Ballard Road in Willing, Duster. This power, this power plant, Navasota Power Plant, has made application to the city and the county. They have three different names with which to address their business. Principal name is Navasota North County Peakers Operation Company, I, LLC. Then they have Anallstein Energy Center, and then they have LLC, and then they have Navasota Power Plant LLC. This plant is located on Ballard Road. I live on Ballard Road. And until two weeks ago, I knew nothing about this power plant. This power plant will exist if the TCDQ passes all of the... The facility will emit the following air contaminants: sulfuric acid, hazardous air pollutants, including but not limited to lead, organic compounds, carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxides, and particulate matter, including particulate matter with diameters of 10 microns or less and 2.5 microns or less. Here are my concerns. This plant, the size it is, all of this emission into our air is going to affect the elderly and the children first, the animals, the water to feed the animals, especially if there's cattle. I'd like for all of you, if you talk about God and you want to pray in here, let's pray about keeping this plant out of Van Alstine, because it's not just going to affect Ballard Road. The wind travels east and south. It is going to affect your community. Your people don't know about Navasota Power Plant. You don't know what's going to come out of this. And because there has...
Just to clarify, I want to understand if you're telling the commission how the way the charges lose base, and we're just getting our share out of it, right? Because it's just going to be additional to the bill, or is this going to be something that's already going somewhere else?
It will be additional.
So it'll be additional? Okay, so what would be the real allocation?
So, question was on cable one, they can pass this tax to the consumer to cover the charges that the city would be collecting from this tax?
Yeah, it's like the sales tax, like just if you buy something at the store, then...
But this is telecommunications, so could you verify just what that does cover? Is it UCEC or cable one or what does that cover?
Predominantly phones, cellular phones, your mobile devices. I don't think it includes cable TV, but it is the... A true communication device. And the state, the state has the six cent sales tax, and the city has two cents. And the two cents that normally is added to things for the city, the state just doesn't add them to these bills unless the city says that they want it to be added. It's kind of the opposite of most things. Usually it's automatic and you have no choice. There's this one narrow area where they don't add it unless you tell the state controller that you want it to be.
So is the answer is it will be added?
Yes.
Councilman Moore, do you have any questions regarding this?
I'm trying to get a grip on telecommunications, because I'm thinking if it's mainly cellular type of systems, is, we're talking about anything that is used inside the city limits, bouncing off the tower that's inside the city limits, we would receive it.
No, it's just going to be if the bill, if the bill for the service comes to someone in the city limits.
So my cell phone bill, address in Van Alstine, would be a two cent tax on my cell phone bill. Is that what I'm...
Yes.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm...
Assistant First Amendment Act, the tax covers everything, mobile exchange telephone services, mobile communication services.
Councilman White?
Section 2, Mobile Communication Services, we're trying to just read that. Allow, term "telecommunication services" as used in this ordinance, all types of communication services as defined in Title III, Part I, Chapter 3, Subchapter 5 of the Texas Statute of Rights. Telecommunication services, the quote is means, the electronic and electrical transmission, conveyance, routing, or perception of sounds, signals, data, or information utilized in wire, cable, radio waves, microwave, satellites, fiber optic, or any other method non-existent, or that may be devised, including the non-identical. Basic Mobile Exchange Telephone Service, Mobile Telephone Service, paid telephone, prepaid telephone services, and private communication services, storage of data and information for subsequent trade wars or processes and perceptions, and processes of data or information intended to change its form or content by not included in telecommunication services. If that works. Section 2.
Is there any other discussion? Is there a motion pertaining to this?
We accept the motion.
Why?
I make the motion accept.
You make a motion, we accept it.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I still want some concern to be very specific, because I know this seems specific, but it doesn't say like the words internet or cell phones. I think it'd be nice if we could ask more of its like us than we know exactly what it covers. So it's still fuzzy.
You have a motion and a second. So what we'll do is all of those in favor of going ahead and passing this at this time, please raise your hand. Three opposed. Two. The motion has passed. Three to two. The next that we have is Department of Records. We will start with you, Jennifer.
I did want to let council know that the Planning and Zoning Commission has decided to change their meeting date. It will most commonly be defined as the third Wednesday, particularly the Wednesday, I guess, one week after council, to allow for more time and modification to implement suggestions that P and Z might make. It'll allow time for that to happen before it actually goes to council for consideration. And also, the Planning and Zoning Commission is doing a lot of work in kind of forward thinking and are reviewing development documents and are working along with Big Management Johnson, our contracting leaders, to make development in our city more concise and easier to follow.
Thank you. Do you have anything you would like to contribute to our meeting?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Chief Barnes?
No, ma'am.
What?
County's placing title on the streets. They don't get to put a letter to check seal on it. We're actually replacing transportation material in City Hall. I'm counseling them to invite transportation material. Good habit, looking for three or four teachers to actually bring into the school systems. PCU will purchase all the materials free of charge, like dividing all out of the field for us, free of charge, and some of the time do that also. We just made the sewer blockage and shut down the plumbing. We actually had, we got a broke piece of concrete, a lot of disposable, rads and wipes, disposable wipes, been up deteriorating sewer system as everybody finds it. And that causes lots of damage. A bed's on rad pump came in. Came in, said 105,000 dollars. That's all the budgets that we worked with our new spirit, both contractors, and we valued our new spirit at 290,000, and that's our budget. We're probably ready to count for a move. And that will help our system operate from up there. And right now, we headed out lead, our present problems, PC test made in San Francisco. We have a test every three years, so this is our year's test. People that have, with some have been born in, and we're playing them all. And we're handing out smoke test packages again, which we're waiting for a lot of storage from today, next two, three days, in South Florida, which is part of Georgia.
And I believe we're, so the water meters are over two digits on this?
We've been doing that for now for two now. When I got here, it was totally a bit progress. What it is, is we concrete, we actually haven't built a side yet in question. It just kind of, it's not one big tower that's going to bring that forward. It's more active, it's less like most of the area we have here, in where it's 15, 30 years old. Some of the action are going to break, and a lot of people might have their actually part of this.
And this does not... Are there any new way water cutoffs that are next to the meter, does anyone know?
If we cut them off, we have beds to go out there and dig them up and get it off.
Okay.
That's only all of that.
I've noticed the new lids are a little bit harder to get at.
Well, they're actually supposed to be locked. That's for certain purposes. On construction sites, we find the floor trash, and if we dig them out, we find people filling up the leaves, bringing spikes like it. So we have to return and have to find space and trash. But they're supposed to be locked, so we couldn't, kids up there.
But will they be locked?
They're just a plastic lock. It still comes out, it's just a little hard.
We can still open it?
Yes, there's no lock, there's no lock key lock on it.
Okay. And even though it sort of latches and I...
It's just a little plastic lock, a little lock, but you can still unlock it.
This has been happening two years? You said you've been installing these many years, this type of...
Yes. I'm just trying to get the city word. I'm not spending five days reading meters with all my people, trying to reduce it down to one day.
I just wasn't listening, and I apologize. You said this, and I hear candid and simple. Is there still a cutoff down that they can use on the inside, on their side of the meter in case they have to change their washer and one of the faucets or something?
They need this file one. The city doesn't, their plumber should have this file one on installation.
In the older homes, the older section in Van Alstine, at one time, Air Department of Public Works Director, when he would put in a meter, he put in the cutoff beside the meter. The thought was, you didn't have to run around the yard trying to find out where the cutoff was, was number one.
It's the trouble, isn't it?
And so he, and he put it right there. And it's always, if you'll go to the older homes, you'll find it's always on the city's side. They did not put it on the side of the resident. I know, I've looked at ours and the ones in our neighborhood, and for the older homes, this is how it has always been done. So there was a concern that, as you said, had a leader wanting to replace a washer in one of the, and a lot of the homes don't have the individual cutoff at the scene. So we wanted to make sure it was not, the lid was not locked.
If I go back on my memory back years ago, most of the plumbers have, was what they did when they installed it, like it to the resident's inside. With the new law pertaining to brass, pipers, you know, double it, it used to cost us about $200 to set up a meter, and now it's almost $300, $400, depending on the condition. So even the plumbers now seeing that, they're going for polyethylene. That way, that way they don't have, they don't deal with it. So we're the ones that get gone with it. The council, they're not, PCU, they're like, like, like. But we do have a bound on our side of the meter, but the law actually rules how much looks like a handle. Because we had one broke off.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from our librarian, who is still our librarian at this minute.
I'm still librarian until the end of August 26th. I ran some numbers today, let you know how the summer's been going, because we're almost done. Let me say thank you to all three of the department heads on my right here for sending over some big rigs and some of their staff Monday morning for Van Alstine Food Break Day as our last program for the summer. We have, again, I ran some just quick numbers from June 2nd through yesterday. We had for the 8,000 checkouts, 124 patron cards, 24 programs for children, 12 under, 30 programs for teens, and we got one more planned before the summer's done on the team. 881 checkouts of a public computer for new, and a little more than 5,000 people through the door.
Not bad for a town of 3,000.
It's been a very busy summer, been a very busy summer. So yes, it's been a privilege to be here for a little more than three years, and I thank you a lot, and some good friends, and I think probably we'll be some months from March.
Billy, Councilman White, do you have any comments at this time?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Russell?
Oh, well, thank our library for her service and everything that she's done. Her passion has been very evident in her work, and not, not everybody can say that. You know, it's, it's great to see people that are passionate about their jobs. Some people hate going to work, but I can tell you, you've always had a passion for your job, and thank you for everything you've done.
The city manager?
Mayor of council, still working on budget on the general fund side. Hope people will pack this out to you in this week. We have our meeting, first general fund meeting next Tuesday. We also had our meeting last week with DR Horton's Engineering, they're right around on the 65 lots, 65 and a half acres on the north end of Georgetown. So that's going to be moving pretty quick. And I appreciate everything that Tracy Luscombe's done for the city, for his management team. She's been a solid partner. She's done a good job balancing friends of library, library board. I don't think either, any, any one of those groups have been difficult to deal with, but I appreciate everything that she's worked with and working with us to make this city better. Thank you, Tracy.
I'd also like to say my gratitude to Tracy for considering what we're doing. Also had an announcement, music in the park will be September 6th, September 7th, September 7th. Nobody signs.
Yes, Tracy, thank you so much for everything you've done. I totally agree regarding the passion. I think that you brought a lot to Van Alstine. I only hope we can keep it here with you, and I'm very excited for you and your new adventures, and thank you for getting the opportunity to confess.
I would like to do for discussing information about the public sale of land, if that's, and if I get out of line and I invite you to correct me on this topic, it's general information.
That you want to make sure that...
Yes.
Billy, he would like to make some statements to make the public aware of the plant that is possibly in our future. Is, can he do that at this time?
I don't know exactly what you want to say, but if you'll look under item 16 of the agenda and see if you think your comments would fall under one of the six things listed there.
I reclaim that it's in your unified reunion. And I just want to say that I receive questions from folks that I know about it, know about it. Many of the questions, they think that's a refinement, and I know that you all know different, but some people look at photographs in the paper, and they think that's a refinement. And so, of course, they worry about explosions and gases, but if you don't mind letting folks know that we're really talking about a generator that's going to supply power for the north Texas region, there certainly are groups, Van Alstine, Danison, Sherman, and it's to the northern, northern region. And so, and I also want to talk about the fuel. The fuel is natural gas, and natural gas is also what you have running most of your hot water heaters, many of your stoves, and natural gas is by its nature a pretty clean fuel already. So that's all I wanted to say about that. And if I may put in a plug about something else entirely, I... And, and if I may, put in a plug, about something else entirely, I don't want to take up too much time, but I want to tell you all, if you're not going to the senior center on music night, the second, the, the second Saturday of each month, you are missing out. They, they have wonderful bands there, um, I mean, it's, it's a good concert, if you don't want to dance, it's at least a good concert, but if you want to dance, you can do that too. Um, and it's a great time, and I want to thank Ms. Joyce White, who's the director over there, or at least one of the directors, who puts all that together, and then it, and wonderful entertainment. So I just want to put in a, put in a plug, the second, two, for the second Saturday of, uh, each month, starting at 6:00 AM's Pizza, or 6:00 PM's Pizza, 6:30 in the morning.
Alice, so much to congratulate Tracy, we are disgusted, air loss is going to be critical, plus, I know that she will do excellent wherever she goes, and all the things that she reads and tells us about, what's going on in the library, if you look to your library for the accomplishments and things like that, so, um, be sure to tell her that we appreciate you, because we have, and we wish you the best of luck. Thank you for your service to the city of Van Alsteyne.
At this time, is there a motion that we adjourn? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Certainly.
Second? Certainly. All of us in favor that we adjourn, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, we are now adjourned at, this is a record, at 7:47.